Jim will be right back, but we can get started here. Let the record reflect that we have reconvened with all members present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
We have a motion for the approval of minutes of reorganization meeting of January 1, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I gave two corrections to Liz Osborn, Mayor.
Good to have you back.
Oh, thank you.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Welcome all on this cold night as we go into polar vortex number three, I guess it is.
(laughing).
Appreciate you taking, coming on out to join us. I apologize for my voice, but I can tell you it sounds, I sound a whole lot better than I did a week ago. So I'm still recovering and Master Tia Kobe, our attorney, is now out. I don't know whether it's the same thing, but he's down and out. So we have Bruce Padilla covering for us tonight. Thank you for joining us, Bruce.
Thank you.
And welcome back to Ostry, returning from surgery. It's good to have you here.
Thank you.
And Ray Cody is still at home recovering. So Jim will be sitting in his space. A couple of things I want to cover and then we'll get on to everything else. Green Village Road School, or Green Village Road, which was brought up by a resident, the challenge of students walking from the far end of Green Village Road to the junior school. Want to thank the Madison Police Department for doing a very quick study on that. And that has been presented back to the Board of Education for their review. So hopefully we can come up with a solution for a safe way to get to school. Jim is not back, so I'm going to hold off on my next comments because it involves him. Want to remind everyone of our budget schedule. Tonight, we are presenting the initial presentation of the municipal budget as prepared by borough staff. This Saturday will be our Budget Town Hall meeting. And in that, we will look at past trends as they led up to this year and some, a little bit of a future outlook. And we'll present, be presenting the utility budget. Even though utility budgets are incorporated in the overall municipal budget, we want to make sure we're looking at those as independent business, in a way like independent businesses. We'll be covering that. And then we'll also allow time for a town hall format. We'll have some discussion questions, encouraging the public to participate and give us feedback. And have a little more time for the public to also comment and give their thoughts on the overall budget. So that's this Saturday at 10 o'clock. The door is open about 9:30 and the meeting will start promptly at 10:00. And we plan to be done by 12:00 noon. A week from today, February 3rd, will have a special council meeting. And that's when the department heads will be presenting their budgets. And then on the 10th, which is a regular council meeting, we'll be reviewing budgets again and going through any of their distributed material that may have come out since then and doing any further revision. And then on the 24th, what the plan would be to, at that council meeting, finalize the budget and with an introduction on March 10th and final adoption on April 12th. So those are the budget calendar. And again, tonight, we are looking at the operating budget as prepared by the staff. And as you know from previous years, that's a starting point. Things can change as we go through the process. This past, last week, we had the Chief Executive Council met, Chief Executive Council of Madison. And it was a look back on their first year of existence, which is a very proud first year for our group. These are CEOs that live or work in Madison with the concept, they're working in three ways. One is giving back to the community. And we've talked, we heard about the great success in working with Union Beach. We had the Union Beach Mayor and two council members attending. And they've got to see some of the people that helped directly in their recovery. Part two is developing the leaders of tomorrow. We won't be here for all, forever, so we're going to make sure there's great people coming up, the next generation, to take our seats, whether it's here in the council or leading the corporations in the, in the country. We're working very closely with Junior Achievement on that program. And Drew University and the high schools. So we've had some great workshops where high school students, college students have been able to sit and listen to CEOs and how they got where they are and sharing their experiences. And the last part of the Chief Executive Council is to help develop Madison business. We know all, this is a great town. And now we have CEOs that are also spreading the word of what a great town Madison would be to move your business to. And we had a little surprise presentation at the meeting. It was the first annual inspiring leadership award was presented and that went to Jim Burnett for all the work he has done on behalf, not only the council, the Chief Executive Council, but for the borough of Madison. So Jim, congratulations, well deserved.[365.03][365.03](applause). And as we are dealing with this latest polar vortex, we've obviously had a bit of, a bit more snow this year than last year. I want to commend our Department of Public Works for a great job in keeping the roads clear. See Michael back there, so you can take the word back to everyone. As in my other role in town and where I work, I get to talk to a lot of people outside of Madison and they say, whoa, it's amazing when as soon as you cross into Madison, the difference in the roads, your town is doing a great job. So thank you for all your work. And as we get to this cold spell, a reminder that the library and other building, Borough Buildings, Borough Hall, and for 24 hours a day would be the Public Safety Building, can be used as a warming station. Certainly different than the summertime, if you don't have air conditioning, you can go to a cooling station and possibly go back to your house in the cool of the night during a cold snap like this. That is not an option. You cannot go back to your cold house. So remind people that this is a warming station to get you out of your house to a nice warm spot. But if you're truly having trouble heating your home, that is an emergency. And please call the Madison Police Department and they will get you help on that and can provide a 24-hour shelter if you need it. And everyone knows that this Sunday is Super Bowl, the first Super Bowl in New Jersey. And while the Meadowlands is not in our backyard, Morristown Airport is. And it is booked solid with flights coming in and coming out. So for those of us, and there's several right up front that live at the western end of town, we will be hearing those jets going overhead. So just a little reminder, it is a short-term thing, not a change of the pattern at Morristown, but all the fans coming in in their private jets. So things will be busier. And I think that's all I have for announcements, so reports from committees. Health, Mr. Landrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief statement from the Health Department, that flu shots are still available. If you need them, call the Health Department at 973-593-3079. Now I'm going to deviate from my normal report just for a moment. At several meetings, we've heard, we've talked about FEMA and I know Ben Wolkowitz has talked about the FEMA money. Well, so far, we've received about, say $400,000 of the $1.2 million that I submitted. So I made a bunch of phone calls and come to find out that Madison needed to submit a memorandum of understanding saying that, you know, we're going to use the money for what it was intended to be used for. And we did that and everything was good. Well, I'm still waiting to find out where the money is, so I called a few more people. Now, the state OEM wants to come in and review everything that already submitted to FEMA. So I talked to them, so what do you want to look at? And they went down the list and said, well, the federal government already approved all this. And I said, you owe us about $800,000. Well, you know, we just have to make sure that everything's in order. So this Wednesday, for about five or six hours, and probably next week, I'll be re-reviewing with the state everything that the federal government has already reviewed. And with any luck, we should have our money, if all goes well, in about four to eight weeks. And that's about $800,000. Just continues. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works Engineering, Mr. Catalonello.
Thank you very much, Mayor. There was a meeting last week of the Capitol Review Committee, Strategic Planning Capitol Committee, and they discussed the 2014 priorities and the five-year capital projections. An informal public hearing on road projects anticipated for this year will be held in the next few weeks. As pertains to roads, final plans and specifications are being assembled by staff for the 2014 Road Improvement Program. Project is anticipated to be advertised to bidders in February, allowing for a spring construction start. Green Avenue reconstruction was completed in cooperation with state funding. The final grant reimbursement documentation is being assembled and hopefully will be delivered this month. Sampson sidewalks and road resurfacing was completed using Safe Roots Federal Funding. Final grant reimbursement documentation is also being assembled this month. And the Rosedale Avenue resurfacing was completed using state funding. Final grant reimbursement documentation is also being assembled this month. As pertains to sewers, the North Street Pump Station Force Main, we are obtaining prices for enclosed pad mount transformers, pads and underground conduits per the original design by Panoni Associates. The Candlewood Pump Station, we've ordered new motor start controls with a dry pit submersible motor to replace the vertical shaft motors and pumps. Treadmill Pump Station, staff has ordered the generator and upgraded the gas main for its location. Several improvements regarding concrete manholes and above-ground controls will also move forward, hopefully be completed this spring. A metering device at Brook Lake Road is being maintained to monitor the quantity of sewage leaving Madison and treated at the Madison-Chatham Joint Meeting. Actual 2013 flow monitoring data was compared to estimates to refine our cost sharing in the Madison-Chatham Joint Meeting. After one calendar year of operation, the metering verifies actual discharges are several percent lower from Madison than prior budget estimates. This adjustment will help reduce Madison's cost of the Madison-Chatham Joint Meeting budget moving forward. The Bailey Ellard Site Remediation Plan construction work by Tilcon is complete. There are several small fence and sign revisions being coordinated and the final remedial action plan documents are submitted to the state. The Madison Recreation Center remediation plan, which is the greenhouse-related arsenic area, which was where the old greenhouses used to be, the final remediation action permit documents were submitted to the DEP prior to the end of 2013 and a response in those submittals is anticipated any time. The Hartley Dodge Site Remediation Plan, LSRP consultant JM Sorge Incorporated anticipates reexcavation of soils in the area. Will be required to obtain a no further action on the remedial action outcome report, that's quite a tongue twister, required by the state regulation. Hartley Dodge Boilers, a final settlement agreement has been proposed to Omega Maintenance Services for work on the boiler installation. Work was substantially completed by November 2013 and there are several small follow-up projects required to assure trouble-free long-term operations. AT&amp;T Wireless has requested its own generators at both wireless cell sites maintained by the borough. Staff is assisting a carrier with required site planning issues and lease amendments. The 2014 Hazard, Household Hazardous Waste and Computer TV Drop Off Event are being, have been scheduled. Be Saturday, May 31st, Saturday, September 13th, and Saturday, October 18th. Do we have, do we have these sheets at the, at the entrance? Right, so the first is at the Morris County Public Safety Training Academy, the second is at Morris County Public Safety Training Academy, and the third will be at Chatham High School. There are flyers here for those interested in proper disposal of hazardous waste. And finally, the Borough DPW Yard will be open on February 15th, 2014, for yard waste collection from the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Last week, as we all know, we had quite a large snowstorm. And I'd like to congratulate the men for plowing the roads and cleaning all of town, especially the downtown, in an expeditious manner. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Utilities, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, with the unusually cold weather, police havoc on the utilities. So both the electric and the water department has been really busy. There was a faulty transformer on Woodland Road, but before that, the crew had to go out at 6:00 for an emergency markout with the water department at DPW. And then went to work until midnight, working on the transformer. What they're doing in between is they perform maintenance on bucket and digger trucks, which are very important to keep those going. And they restored Bank Two at King's Road Substation, which was out of service for about a week for repairs. In the water department, because of the freezing temperatures, you know, residents have reported lots of frozen pipes. And there were some instances of burst meters as well. So, and then on top of it, it would, we had water main breaks at Avon Drive, Albright Circle, and Cross Gates Road. So, and public service is doing lots of emergency markouts too, because they're having problems as well. So, and Sal, in the meantime, keeps on going with the general maintenance of all the well equipment, the sampling from New Jersey DEP has to be done, well, the record-keeping has to be done. And then annual New Jersey DEP regulatory updates at Rutgers this week are due. So that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Safety, Ms. Bailey.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Project Community Pride, they are planned, the social workers are planning an informational evening for parents on the topic of prescription drug abuse. They're going to be doing this, coordinating this with Quest Diagnostics, Madison Public Health, and the Madison Police. Quest will be providing a speaker who is a former DEA agent. And they've, the social workers of Project Community Pride have established a group for fifth-grade girls to build their resilience against the pressures of middle school. And they are also taking training on dialectical behavioral therapy, the treatment of choice for self-injury. They find that there are a lot of young people who are doing self-mutilation and they are taking training courses to help these children. And then for the police department, the police department, Realogy, which is one of our newest neighbors in Madison on Park Avenue, just donated a radar sign to the police department. And the borough thanks Realogy for that contribution. And Safewise just ranked the 50 safest cities in New Jersey, and Madison ranked number ninth. So we want to congratulate the police department and anyone else involved in making Madison the ninth safest town in the state of New Jersey. For our fire department, they too have been very busy during the recent snowstorm on Monday, it was actually Tuesday, January 21st. They had responded to a chimney fire on 280 King's Road. Then again, they responded to another fire and helped Chatham Township for a residential structure fire. And there were six towns involved in extremely cold temperatures for over two and a half hours. No one was injured. Their 2013 year-end report for the fire department, they responded to 1,200 calls, 18 department drills were conducted, there were 321 smoke CO inspections conducted, 447 fire prevention inspections of commercial properties, 757 fire subcode inspections, including new construction renovations. And fees and fines collected in 2013 were $103,451. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance, Borough Clerk, Mr. Wolkowitz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Announcement from the clerk's office, in anticipation of the June 3 primary election, the filing deadline for nomination petitions for county committee member as well as municipal office is March 31st, 2014. Forms are available in the clerk's office. In addition, voter registration forms as well as mail-in ballot applications are also available in the clerk's office and online at morriselections.org. Morris elections, one word. I would also like to remind everyone that, as in previous years, this year, we again will have volunteers who are IRS certified, who will offer tax preparation services at no cost to moderate and middle-income taxpayers. Tax preparation takes place at the Madison Senior Center on Wednesdays, excuse me, beginning the first week of February and ending, of course, on April 15th. In addition, I don't know how well-known the following program is, but if, I would certainly ask you all to spread the word on this. There is a property tax reimbursement program that's still viable in the state of New Jersey. There are definite requirements, including age. I'll go through a couple of them in a moment. And because of age, it has, it goes by the unfortunate, given this time of year, title of senior freeze. But what senior freeze refers to is freezing your property tax at a given level. To qualify, either you or your spouse has to be over 65 or less than 65 and receiving federal Social Security disability benefits. You have to have lived in New Jersey for a minimum of 10 years, owned your own home for at least three, and have a total family income of less than $84,289 in 2013 and $82,880 in 2012. Now that is for eligibility in the program. It doesn't guarantee the reimbursement. The reimbursement level in 2012 was $70,000 in income. There are a few other requirements and limitations to this program, but the same people who are certified to prepare taxes are also knowledgeable about this program. We will put up additional information on Rosenet. Dave Luber, who's one of the volunteers on tax counseling and is in the audience, will be, has sent in a letter to the Madison Eagle, which is expected to run this week, detailing the both programs and giving you a lot more background than I just did. But again, if you know anyone who you believe would fit these requirements, please let them know about this program. Thank you.
And Community Affairs, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you. The DDC met in the last two weeks. 2014 is going to be a banner year with the emphasis on partnerships, including MACA, the Madison Music Association Historical Committee, Drew, The Chamber, Rotary, DPW, the Borough, and more. I had the privilege of swearing in the new commissioners and we added one new commissioner this year, Barb Short from Quest. The Cook Plaza Alley renovation has been completed and this includes new lighting. And the DDC is already planning for their annual events, including the Sidewalk Art Gallery and Auction, which is returning for the second year, the Taste of Madison, May Day, the Farmer's Market, and others. They look forward to several large public improvement projects in 2014, including wayfinding signs at the, in town and at the Madison Gateways, adding Wi-Fi to downtown, the downtown historical walking tour, which is a partnership with the Historical Preservation Committee, and mobile performance space. And then for the Recreation Advisory Committee, we met last week and the focus of the meeting was on the draft of the Recreation Department Codes and Policies, which the council will be seeing later this quarter. It covers a wide range of issues, including facilities use, background checks for our coaches, safety regulations and coach training, and a code of conduct. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Communications and petitions.
Yes, Mayor. Council received one email on January 22nd from resident Melissa Fitzgerald of Green Village Road, thanking the electric department for their quick response in repairing a streetlight on Green Village Road.
Thank you. And this is the first of two invitations for discussion. This one is limited to items on our agenda discussions, which include Open Space Committee Quarterly Report, Madison Police Department Rules and Regulations, the 2014 Road Reconstruction Program, the Second Annual Committee Chair Meeting, and then the presentation on the operating budget, as I mentioned before. Also, you may comment or ask questions on any of the resolutions that are listed on the consent agenda. There have been four resolutions related to hirings in DPW and in this building, part-time positions in this building that were added on the board. So anyone wishing to comment on any of those items, please step up to lectern, state your name, your address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone, Sam?
On the ordinance on 2, 2014, about the $1,660,000, there are all the roads, where all that money's going to go to? What roads are they?
Um, yeah, there was a new ordinance that was listed. And those roads include, whoever can come up with it first, hold a second here. I've got it. And the wording is, includes these roads, but it's not limited to. So if we're able, because of bidding, to get more roads done, we might go ahead and do that. But it's North Street, Pine Tree Terrace, Durwood Place, Fletcher, Academy Road, Belmont, Vinton, and Wilson Lane. This is the list that was presented at the meeting two weeks ago. And as was suggested, since Vinton is being done and Wilson's a small cul-de-sac off of Vinton, to see if we could fit that in. So that was the only addition or change from what was discussed two weeks ago.
Very good. And in several cases, I suggested, I don't know how, but are these going to be all individual consultants and individual contractors?
It's going out as a package bid, so with your suggestion over the years of trying to maximize.
Finally took one last.
Yep, so we are putting it all out. And it's also just a reminder, I won't, I'll stop the clocks to not to take it from your time, but.
That was my only guy.
Okay.
That's good, very good. You did the right thing.
So, we have, and I, we mentioned this two weeks ago, but just to reaffirm this, that really have jump-started our roads program, that these projects are ready to be bid out there. And as mentioned, they will go out as one package. Anyone else wishing to be here? Yes.
I wanted to thank you for having Academy Road on that list. Just want to make sure we stay on the list. Thanks again.
Yep, you're welcome. Mary Beth.
Mary Beth Forte, 7 Academy Road. Just want to echo my neighbor's comments. Thank you for including us on the list for 2014, and we're looking forward to getting started on it.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? Anyone else from Academy just want to wave and say thank you? Okay, there we go.[1634.33][1634.33](laughter) Or from any other neighborhood? All right, we will now move on to the next item on the agenda, which is our agenda discussions. Our first one is the Open Space Committee Quarterly Report. Melissa.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the second quarterly report since this was instituted. And our first quarterly report from the advisory committee was given on 9/9/13. And so I'm going to sort of focus more on what happened after that report. For 2013, the, actually, I think everyone has access to a copy of this report and the council has it in front of them. But since our last report, the outflows, which were based on the advisory committee's recommendations to the council and then voted on by the council, were support for the Historic James Building for $125,000. Environmental expenses for cleanup at the MRC and Bailey Ellard was $5,000 approximately. Maintenance at MRC and the MRC parking lot, just to finish that, that project up, was about $55,000 total. So looking forward to 2014, we have, we have put in here basically the inflows that we expect, which would be the input from the Madison Athletic Foundation, which is yet to be determined, the tax levy, which is about $610,000 based on the reassessment from last year, field rentals and user fees, approximately $65,000. And then we also expect that there will be a trail grant match at the MRC, which will be $18,500. Now that's pending a grant approval. As far as outflows, we, the MRC debt payment, the MRC note interest, the MRC turf, those all add up to $484,000. And other products and costs will be the, when we had considered the Historic James Building, the METC Downtown, it was a three-year project. So this will be the second year of their request. It will be $140,000. The common area maintenance fee for the MRC is 10. And continued environmental cleanup. And continued environmental cleanup at Bailey and MRC, here it says twenty-five. I think that that number is likely to be a bit higher.
And we'll take questions, or?
Oh, anytime you want to have a question.
All right. Go ahead, Pat.
You said it might be higher. You guys have a range of what it's looking like at this point?
Well, just based on the fact that the cleanup at Bailey in two thousand and thirteen was, I'm sorry, what, was about almost a hundred, was it?
Well, Bailey was three-fifty for the whole, but that included the parking lot and some other things.
Yeah.
Parking lot.
Yeah.
I mean, do we have a, do we have some sort of idea of what we're going to have to do at this point?
I'll take that, Pat. That's a placeholder number. We're working with our engineer, Bob Vogel, on it. There's a wide range of could-dos there, and there's a certain number of have-to-finish-ups. So there's, there's a certain number of things we have to finish up. That's certainly going to cost money. We have to finalize some fencing, which Rob mentioned in his report. We also have to finalize the remedial action outcome submission and then pay off the consultant for the work that they've done at both Bailey Ellard and the MRC. So that dollar amount is a placeholder. However, there certainly could be additional remediation that could happen there. The, the current state in the next few months will be such that we won't have to do anymore. But there's obviously been discussion about possibly in the near term or long term paving over a portion of the area that is currently fenced off over at the MRC and other potential projects over at Bailey Ellard. So the twenty-five thousand is placeholder, and depending on Open Space's recommendation and then council's approval, there could be more, more.
So just one last thing. What's the high end of that range?
The, the high end, I don't want to say, Pat, because council and the Open Space Committee could agree to pay both sides as you enter off of the MRC, and that could be a couple hundred thousand dollars. I, I don't know that that's a project that's going to be advanced by either board. I don't think either board has an appetite to do that extensive, but, but there, there's certainly a lot of opportunities to take those spaces that are currently not accessible to the public and make them accessible through remediation and through the installation of playgrounds, parking lots, and alike.
Ben?
I was just curious, who's doing the assessment of these properties, Bailey Ellard in particular? Who's looking at them and, and coming back with this information? You referred to they. I just was wondering who in fact is doing it.
Who in fact they are.
In terms of what, Ben, who's looking at what project should be advanced?
No, I mean, who's reviewing Bailey Ellard and then saying, there are some things that we think should be done?
Doing the environmental work? Oh, I'm sorry, that's...
Yeah. Well, start with the environmental...
Environmental work's being done by Hatchmont McDonald.
Okay. And, and, and some of the other things, like when you talk about improvements to the fields, is that the REC committee or?
That's, that's discussion with either REC or through the Open Space Advisory Committee. Anyone who has suggestions, engineering has offered, and we've had some discussions about remediation, various remediation options of the arsenic-contaminated property over at the MRC, whether it's tilling the soil to reduce the contaminant level down to a point that it would be below the residential topical standards or paving.
Thank you. Any other questions on this page before? Okay.
And then, in two four, two thousand and fourteen, we're aware of some potential requests that may come into the Open Space Committee, so for consideration and then for recommendation to the council. And we just wanted to list some of the things that we're, we're aware of. They are not a hundred percent surely coming in, but something to consider for two thousand and fourteen. As you know, the MRC task for, ad hoc task forces are putting together a long-term plan for that area, and that, that may or may not include a dog park. That might be somewhere else as well. A park maintenance with storms and the removal of invasives, recovery of the trails and things like that, that could be a request from, for the parks. There are some issues with the Rosedale Fields, both as far as usage, and I think that that's sort of become more of, of something that people are paying attention to because of the status of GBR. And you can see the list here, the remediation project that, that Pat, you were just asking about, the potential playground paths and cross-country project at the MRC, and a proposed connection from the traction line down the road all the way to the MRC, which would provide a safe crossing of Park Avenue. Luke Miller, from a historic perspective, Luke Miller Forge, they've done a great job doing some private fundraising, and there's potential to come to the advisory committee with a proposal there as well. And we don't have anything that the committee is aware of as far as land acquisition currently, but again, you never know. So that's it.
Pat and then Rob.
I'm assuming that the stuff on page three is really going to be projects that are after two thousand and fourteen. Could we continue to carry the balance of whatever you're going to propose for the Museum of Early Trades, because I think that was a four-year plan in terms of funding?
Yeah, sorry, I missed about four years.
Okay. So if that could stay on here, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Rob?
Just want to start by saying thank you for your, for volunteering. It's a lot of work, I know. Were there any projects that the committee decide, that were brought to the committee that you decided not to bring to council?
Uh, no, not in two thousand and thirteen. The council did receive all of the recommendations.
And, you know, several people have approached me about trying to get a paddle court put somewhere at the, at the forty-nine acres. How would they go about submitting a, a project request?
Well, I think first, it would be important to include that in the conversation with the MRC ad hoc planning committee.
They should go to them for, I don't know where to go, so...
Yeah. I mean, that's kind of the way the, the fencing project came about, which was the council generously approved a few weeks ago. But I think that, that would probably...
That, that would be the, since we have a committee working on the, the layout of the forty-nine acres, that would be the best.
I'll have them get in touch with...
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, then it gets...
I have, I have a couple of other questions, unless, Bob, you want to jump in?
Yeah. Throughout the year, or the last couple of months, we've been working on different projects to do at what I'll call the thirty-nine acres, which is the wooded area across from the fields. Yeah, we'll welcome any suggestion. A few of the items that you see on page three are just some ideas that have come out to date. We've had other types of requests, we're in the process of finalizing, because we want to bring it to council for consideration. So, yeah, if you could get me that information, I'd be more than happy to take care of it.
Sure, I'll have them, I'll send them to you. Okay, so now, I, I voted for, and I was happy to vote for, the funding of the Historic James Building museum work. My question is, do we have a, a plan that's been certified by the engineer for that work?
I can answer that, Rob, and that. We did have a very detailed meeting and went over the specifics of that plan with our engineer and with the professionals at the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts, and Bob Vogel's comfortable with the work that's being done.
So it's been certified?
Yes.
It has been certified?
Well, reviewed, I guess, would be the...
Certified, I don't know what you mean. Bob Vogel reviewed it.
But I thought that there was, I thought that the law said that before you can advance money in excess of a hundred thousand dollars for a reconstruction project on a borough property, it needs to be certified by an, an engineer. I'm not familiar off the top of my head with that specific statute, but we'll take a look at it and see if there's a requirement that needs to be done. We'll make sure that that was done, and if not, we'll take whatever steps need to be taken to fix that.
Okay.
Wonderful. And then, it's just for audit purposes. I know we have an audit committee now, and I know we advanced the money prior to actually having the plan done. And I know we all voted for it, but as opposed to advancing it, maybe we should have held it until the plan was certified by the engineer. Now, in addition to that, when there was the last presentation, we spoke about a private fundraising plan for this, and I'm wondering if there's any update on that. If I'm not mistaken, we had taken a grant, and they were using the grant money to develop a private fundraising plan. Do we have a, an update on that?
I'm the liaison of the museum. They do have a fundraiser in place to help them. They do fundraise, and they do have a requirement that a certain amount of their money has to go into a building fund. So that is in, in the process. They need, they need dollars to leverage the grant money from the county. I mean, that's one of the reasons why they are coming to us, for Open Space to help them leverage the county historic preservation dollars.
I remember that, and we voted on it, and we, I voted for the project. I'm just wondering, though, so there's no, there's been no update on the grant that was used to, to develop the private fundraising plan for this particular project?
I, I, I'll have to go and check. I don't think there's a grant, per se, to establish a fundraising project. There is a person that they hired to help them fundraise.
And they used grant money to hire that person, right?
And also, they pursued over multiple steps with the historic preservation, with the Morris County Historic Preservation Trust, funds to study the issue, funds to develop the plans for the actual construction, Rob. So it might be that that's what you're thinking, that this, that they received grant funds to actually do the study of the work and then develop the plans to do the actual remediation and, and repair work.
Oh, Mayor, any, any money that is coming from the borough is going directly to a capital improvement project. It's not going to a fundraiser.
Oh, absolutely. No, no, it was a separate, I recall...
It's a separate grant, yeah.
Yeah, I recall, and I, and I watched it again, but it's been a while, it's been cold, so I've forgotten a lot of stuff. We, we specifically asked about the private fundraising, and the answer was that they had used another grant, not money from the borough, a grant they had received to hire an individual to, to set up this, this private fundraising, and I was just wondering what the, the status of that was.
Okay, I'll find out.
Great, yep.
And then, and then I, you know, I had some questions on the minutes and going into an executive session, and I, I asked the attorney about it. But I see the advisory board in three, in three instances last year adjourned meetings to go into executive to discuss, at least in the first one, they discussed grants and land acquisitions. And I'm wondering why an advisory board would go into executive session when they have no authority to enter into the, into contracts on behalf of the borough, they have no employees, and, and they have no budget. I, I just think that if we're going to talk about spending the taxpayers' money, it should be, there should be transparency.
And certainly, one of the things, we'll come it up further down, is the Second Annual Committee Leadership Training, which is to make sure people are aware of what, what can be done. Ostry?
Yeah, I have some, something to add to that, which I discussed with the attorney, and I think the attorney transmitted that information to you. The Open Space Advisory Committee is part of their job, is to put together a list of potential properties that could, at any time, be desirable for the borough to purchase. Those properties are proprietary information. They're not, it, it possibly is not going to happen that they're going to be purchased, but they are on the list of desirable properties. For example, the ExxonMobil property in Florham Park was on that list way, way back when. That is information that goes into an executive session, because it's, it's, it's not something we want to, you know, suggest that, that it's out there for, it's going to be purchased or whatever, but we want to keep it in mind as a property that if it should come up in the market, this is something we want to advise the council, it's a good piece of property to purchase for whatever reason. That's why we went into executive. That list is part and parcel of open space planning.
So we can have...
Yeah, I understand, philosophically, you know, if, if the purpose of executive is to discuss contract matters, litigation matters, or personnel matters...
The potential contract matters.
But if the, if the instant, but if, if the committee has no authority to enter into contracts on behalf of the borough, why not do it?
Rather than have council decide, I think what we can do, it's, it's a good question. It's a very good explanation as to why it was done, but we will take that back, Bruce, and if, if you can work with Matt and come back with a, an opinion, and so we can, whether it's Open Space or any other committee, obviously, if you, you talk about potential land purchases, it, it could drive the sale in a different direction, and so that...
Right, but it's not our money, it's the people's money?
Yeah, but, but it's, it's still, they're, they're not committing it, so it's just a matter of, you know, yeah, as I said, I don't think we need to discuss this right now. I think we can, we can get a clarification, and, and we'll add that to our potential March first training as to, for all committees to understand.
Right, because we've had instances in the past where committees have entered into contracts on behalf of the borough when they weren't allowed to...
No, 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 no.
Yeah, that's, yeah, and that's...
We understand our advisory position and our role.
I, I understand.
And we know that it's to, the number one thing on the ordinance says acquisition of open space. The primary purpose of the open space was to acquire property. We have to keep a list, we keep that in executive, and we would obviously cannot enter anything without the authority of the council.
Right, and I never said the environment, I never said that you guys...
So, anyway...
There are other committees that did, unfortunately.
This is a good, good, good conversation. We, we will have the attorneys look at it, and we either confirm that it, it is under these circumstances of reasonable practice, or it is under reasonable practice, and we'll change it. So that's...
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep. Carmella?
You know, God forbid I should keep my mouth shut this long. Anyway, let, let me just make one comment, okay? I, I've sat here lots of times, and we have tons and tons of committees in this town. I, for one, appreciate the fact, and I sat and I read all of the minutes from the meeting, and it was, it was very interesting to see, you know, how a committee works and whatever. So I, I, we don't get these kind of reports. You're probably about the only one that really gives us detailed reports. Now, this is the second one we've gotten this, this past year. And I, I just want to tell you in the committee, I'm very appreciative of that. I think when the mayor starts talking about the committee chairs again, we were all required at one point, you know, to give, you know, this kind of information to the council, and I'd like, I'd like to take what you people have done and use it and say to all the other committee chairs, hey, listen, you know, that, this can be done. It's a little extra work for volunteers, but you talk about transparency. This is about the most transparent thing I have seen this year. I mean, there's people that have come here and made presentations that, you know, I, I didn't understand for two days later. So, you know, I appreciate what you're doing, and if I could just make that suggestion to the mayor, is that we have to go back and start taking them as an example of what should be done.
Thank you. I just, I have to recognize Kathy Coltes for her awesome, awesome work.
She did a good job. I read them.
Bob, Ben, and then Pat.
Okay. I guess what I'm having a problem with here is the, I guess, the statement that they were going to enter into a contract or commit funds.
I never said they were going to do that. I just think they don't have the authority to do that.
Well, and I guess, you know, I'm not saying I don't want to start, start a hornets nest here, but, you know, things can be implied. From my understanding, you know, a committee meets an executive session to discuss issues. Now, I've gone before them for the Bailey Ellard project, and the process was very, and I'll say it again, very transparent. They asked me a lot of questions, they, we discussed the pros and cons, they talked about it, and it was brought to council. I don't see anything other than that happening here. I know committees go into execu, executive session all the time to discuss issues. I think that's what they did here. I don't think for a minute, I'm not going to speak for them, I'm not going to make an assumption, that they were never going to commit money. I don't believe that was ever in the cards. And that's it.
Let me just...
No one ever said we thought so. I just asked why a committee without the, without those, without that ability would go into executive. It's a philosophical question in an open, public meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
So anyone that thinks that I'm pointing fingers, saying, oh, you're, absolutely, nothing could be further from the truth. I'm just asking what the purpose was of going to an executive session to discuss grants and property action. That's all.
Yep, and, that's exactly what I was about to say. I think, I don't want to, I don't, don't want to hear any more discussion on the executive part of this. We've covered it, we will clarify it, and we will move forward. I don't think there was any intention to accuse anyone of doing things behind closed doors. It was just a question to understand what is allowed. And we are held to a high standard, whether it's this council or any committee that represents a borough, because of, we, we are working for the residents, and so we must make sure we do everything properly. So we'll, we'll do our homework, and we'll stay tuned. So we'll let everyone know, and we'll let all the other committees know. Ben?
Yeah, I just wanted to add my compliments, since I seem to recall having pressed for this as a quarterly event. So I want to thank you for coming to us in a timely fashion, and everyone in your committee for what's obviously hard work. And I agree with Carmella, if you need a template on how it should be done, by all means, use this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Pat?
Yeah, I think the, the minutes were great. The one thing I would ask, and I think it's actually, you know, good, good house...
good, good housekeeping just for the entire borough, is if this stuff could be posted online. I looked back last year when we were discussing.
We, we actually do post that as quickly as they're approved and open space minutes are online available.
Okay, 'cause I think when I looked, there was nothing beyond last spring, but I'll double check again. Either way.
We try, we try to make, when, once they're approved, we try to give it to Liz, but I, I mean, it could be.
And, and actually, it's not just, it's, it's actually, I would ask in terms of all the committees that we have, actually, they're probably one of the better groups in terms of getting stuff up, but it would be helpful to residents if they could see what these groups are doing as they do it. I mean, I know there's a lag between when the minutes are produced, when they're approved, and when they can get posted, but, you know, three or four months behind wouldn't seem to be an unreasonable request.
Yeah. I forget whether that was covered in our meeting last year, but we'll, we'll add that to the agenda.
Uh, 'cause that's, that's the first place I go when I try to find information about even just the things I'm responsible for. And then I guess the other question is, and this goes back to, I guess, our attorney, if, if there is gonna be an executive session, is the council allowed to be privy to that information, given that we kind of fall under the same tone of silence?
As I said, we will get a ruling and then we will come back. So let's, yes. Okay. Any other questions from Melissa? Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thanks to Jim for his help with getting the finances together too.
Jim, we'll get something from Borough Engineer on the, on the plan, certifying the plan. Thank you.
Could silence all phones, please? Where, where am I hearing things? All right, moving on to our next item, which is the Madison Police Department Rules and Regulations.
I'll take that, Mayor. Very briefly, council received department rules and regulations from Chief Datchison, along with agenda recommendation asking for council to consider this. This is part of the New Jersey State Chiefs Association Accreditation Program. It's an important step to make sure that we're doing everything right over at the police department and that they have the right policies and process and rules and regulations there. The rules and regulations have been reviewed by Matt Jacoby, our borough attorney, and these are being advanced by the New Jersey State Chiefs Association. So they're very standardized, but also very important for us to have these rules and regulations. We ask that council approve these rules and regulations.
Carmella and then Pat?
Jim, one, one question. These are phenomenal, you know. It's a long read, but I think it, it's really worthwhile. My, my thought was, you know, we passed an ordinance last year that really identified, you know, the requirements for chief all the way down to patrolman and whatever. If, if there is, is there anything in here? Have you asked that question of Matt Jacoby that would change that ordinance perhaps, or that we have to amend anything?
That hiring ordinance, which includes the policy for hiring and for promotions.
It's all in sync.
You know, they're totally in sync, yes.
Yeah.
Pat?
Good.
Well, that answered one of my questions. The other is, I'm assuming this goes into effect immediately, once we approve it? And so what's the mechanism for making sure that everybody in the department is aware of it? And do they have to sign something that says they've read it and approved, or not approved it, but agreed to it?
It's actually in here, Pat, that, and they will, they have a, an excellent, actually, electronic system because that department, more than any, is very hard to communicate with everyone because they're on night shift, they're on day shift, they're, they're different days. So they actually have a system where they communicate. The chief will send this out, and then each officer has to actively acknowledge that they received it.
And it's not a choice for the officer. They, they don't have to agree to it. They have to follow it.
They just have to acknowledge that they, they, they've seen it.
Right, right. And sometimes even, for example, with receipt of employee handbooks, things like that, you have some recalcitrant employee who won't sign off on it for some reason. In those cases, you just take a note that says it was given to the employee on this date, and, you know, I'm sure the same kind of thing is done here, so.
Okay, thank you.
And it might be good to get a abbreviated version that we can share with the public so they can see that we are, you know, holding our police officers to a, a high standard.
In a digital world, you can post the whole thing relatively easily.
Okay, so this is a resolution, correct? Yeah. Fifty, R 53, 2013.
R 53, Mayor.
All right, 2014 Road Reconstruction Program?
Okay, Bob Vogel's out sick, so I'm gonna pick that one up too, Mayor.
It's going around, isn't it?
Only one here. Mike Giudola, take your vitamins. So, in any event, I digress. As, Mayor, as you said earlier, we're looking to introduce an ordinance to fund the entire road reconstruction project, doing it as previously discussed, having it as one large bid to hopefully attract a larger contractor. The streets were aforementioned by you, Mayor. And from a finance and budgeting standpoint, I know we'll be talking about it in a few minutes, but as had been previously discussed, the entire dollar amount for fund balance, capital, general capital fund balance, which is 1.46 million, had been stated by council that that should go, immediately be dedicated to capital. That, along with the sale of property on Bello, and the current dollar amount that we have in the general capital fund allows us to fund this without honestly needing any other dollars from operating or from the electric utility for 2014. There's obviously a need, as we had talked about at the last budget hearing, to advance this portion of capital earlier because we need to pave when the weather is appropriate. And all the other capital items that were listed on the capital document that we reviewed a couple of weeks ago, the blue document here, those items can wait and can be up for further deliberation. We are asking that council consider introducing this ordinance this evening so we can get to work paving all the roads and fixing all the roads.
Comments, questions? Again, this ordinance is listed for introduction. Ostry and then Pat?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. One question I do have, is there a number of significant trees coming down in these projects? Have been discussed with the shade tree management board. I mean, there's no way to avoid these, this, I mean, are these trees in good health? What's happening there?
Vinton's one of the biggest issues because that has a lot of really big trees right at the edge of the road. And unfortunately, they're just not, not savable. We have talked to the shade tree management board about it, and we're gonna go, obviously, do replanting afterwards, but just given the nature of the age of that road, the age of these trees, the width of the road, the deterioration of the curb line, and the need to totally reconstruct the drainage in that street, we're gonna lose some big trees.
Pat, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I did. So I was sitting here at the last meeting, listening to Nancy Adamaschuk talk about the work that was gonna be done at the library, and she was talking about possibly bringing her parking lot forward to match with Belmont. And I know that that was a fairly significant amount of money we couldn't afford. But I started to think about it, and I sent a note to Jim and Ray last week and said, you know, we really should consider whether we're doing Belmont a year early because it is, should be, in my mind, done at the same time as the parking lot. If we can't do the parking lot this year, you know, I think it's, it's worth considering. They asked Bob Vogel, I think he said, the amount that we could save by doing the both together could be about $10,000. So I really thought maybe we should reconsider whether that one should be done this year and not possibly postpone until next year when we're doing the parking lot at the library.
I, I think, my view at least, I think they're very easily, very distinct projects. The Belmont Water Main was done four, at least four, four or five years ago, and I don't know if you've driven down, there, there are some.
I did. I went, I went down this weekend.
Yeah, it, it.
I want to confirm.
Yeah, with, with no curbs and all that, I'd be very concerned that Belmont would become the next academy, that all of a sudden it's pushed off again and those neighbors come in. That, that road is so long overdue, and the parking lot is next year or the year after. Who knows exactly when that would be designed and done? So I'd, I'd be very worried about changing that. Rob, and then Bob?
Thank you. I agree with Pat on that in that, you know, I, I know we say, oh, it's only 10 or 15 or $20,000 savings. You know, my first job, you know, was in foreign exchange, and we used to, Ben probably knows, you know, we'd trade money. And you'd say, oh, can I have a price on $10 market? And it's not $10, it's 10 million, right? And you don't realize how big it is until you deal backwards and you make a mistake and you have a loss. So my view is anytime we can save 10 or $20,000, we should look into it. And upon closer examination of this, this well-done schedule, I see we have Prospect out in 2017. I'm sure that all of you on your way to Belmont drive up and down Prospect, and we all realize that ain't gonna make it to 2017. So does it make sense, then, to look to combine next year, and we, it, it's a horrible decision, but we're gonna have to make it, moving Prospect up, combining that with, with, with Belmont and, and, and the library parking lot into one bigger job? So I'm all for, you know, this, and I, and I applaud the fact that we're getting ahead of it. But when I look at the schedule and I see that we have Prospect for three years in the future, you know, and maybe I, you know, I have a, I know you, you probably drive it every day with, with the squad, Bob. I drive home up that road from the train station most days. I don't think it's gonna make it to 2017. So if, if we can combine all this together, maybe then it makes sense to push Belmont off one road, one year, if in fact we can move Prospect up. But that's just my, it's a suggestion that I have. I don't wanna stand in the way of passing the ordinance, but maybe it's something we can rejigger, you know, and, and maybe move one or two roads ahead in place of Belmont this year that we're gonna do next year and just kinda get it all done at once.
I'm assuming part of the timing on Prospect is it's one of the few roads that might be eligible for state funding. And so now we have the Ridgedale, Ridgedale Prospect over the next three years. So it'd be, we'd be, instead of poss, possibly saving 10,000, yes or no? We'd be turning our backs on hundreds of thousands of dollars from the state.
We certainly aren't gonna do that. But I mean, I mean, it's, is it worth discussing? Is there some way we can move things around? Because I don't know if we can wait till 2017. Ben, you live up that way.
Well, I, I think minimally, it's gonna have to be, just as we had to buy time at Green Avenue, some, some potholes since not only everyone rides it, I, I tend to ride my bicycle on it, so I know it too. Bob, Carmella, and then Ben?
What concerns me most about Belmont is it's quickly becoming an academy. But what's even more worrisome is they don't even have the benefit of a sidewalk there. And there are children that are living on that street. $10,000, it's probably, in this case, you know, money well, well spent, if indeed it will result in a $10,000 save. So I think, you know, if anything, you keep Belmont, and there are a few other streets here that I see scheduled for 2015 that, quite frankly, I don't know if it's in the budget for this year, that I'd almost like to see pushed to 2014 as well. You know, talking about Kenny and West Street, which are in very poor condition. But I say we have them pushed out to 2015. But I would definitely say Belmont, no curbs, young families living there. It needs to get done.
And, Carmella and then Ben?
Carmella, then, that's me.
I, I, what I, what I wanna say, as I look at this list, these streets have been asking for help. We've heard a lot of people from Academy. The problem is, is that nobody came from Belmont, okay? Except for us who use the street that goes down and realize that it's in dire straits. And for us that remember that four years ago, you know, a water main was put in, and the usual way is like two years later is when it gets paved, and that hasn't happened. So we're two years over that. And if anybody goes down to Pine Tree and, and Derwood and Fletcher, I mean, you could ask DPW guys. They, they have a hard time probably even plowing down there because of how, the, the shape of the road. I don't even wanna talk about North Street. North Street has been on a list for at least 150 years. So if that top part doesn't get done, I'm gonna be angry, okay? But, so I feel very, very good about how this looks. And, you know, as far as the parking lot, you know, at the, at the library, we've talked about it, and I, I don't want you to get mad at me, but, you know, we're, we're helping with $450,000 this year in their capital fund, you know, which is a very big project for them. It's my understanding that Bill Van Rysen wanted to do some surveying and some DEP work and whatever to make sure that that drainage is, is complete and whatever. I don't think we should hold up any streets at this point. I think, you know, we'll get that done, and it's not gonna be any inconvenience. So, you know, I'm pleased with it. And, and after my question about Wilson at the last meeting, that there was $60,000, I've noticed it's gone up to $70,000, and I'm still concerned about that. I don't know that a street is gonna cost us $70,000 to do, you know? And Bob Vogel is really gonna have to look at that as far as I'm concerned. One of the other problems that I have is, we talked about some of those trees coming down on some of the streets and whatever. Is that included in these, in this pricing? Okay. Yeah, I wanna make sure about that because if that's extra, you know, we have to kinda think about it. But these are, are very, very important streets. I, I understand about Prospect, but, you know, we let some of this go for too long, and now we're have to pay for that.
Ben?
Yes. Actually, that was a good segue, Carmella, because absent objective standards on how to select these things, I've been looking at, at what we've done in the past and historically how we've looked. And it's quite clear that over the last four years or so, four, five years, for reasons that have become obvious, I think when we talk about the budget and utilities, is we've under-invested in our capital. So we're now confronted with three years, and you look just at the road piece dollars over three years. All of these projects are justified, and from what I've heard and the answers to questions I've asked, deserve to be on the list, and I certainly would throw in Prospect from 2017. How you select which one to do is what we've asked the Strategic Planning Committee to address. And I'm glad to see the chair of that committee, Bruce Galton, is in the audience. We can argue all night long about whether it should be this street or that street. I don't have the expertise, and I'm not gonna make that decision, and I'm certainly not gonna talk to the residents. The only thing I, I feel very strongly about is we're long overdue for fixing all of these streets. And the only reason we stopped out at 1.6 is because that's about the capacity of our engineering department. If we had a larger department, this would be a bigger number. I, for one, am tired of feeling like every third time I get my oil changed, I need a front-end alignment. It's really a shame that we, it's the one thing I look at in Madison that we just don't have up to standard. So all I'm saying is, I don't know how to make these decisions. I certainly don't wanna go down to one of these streets and say to those citizens, sorry, we couldn't do it this year. Whatever's decided, though, I'm, I'm adamant that this sum total going from 2014 to 2017 be spent, and preferably within three years, not four.
Thank you. Any other comments? We have this ordinance listed for introduction, which will, it does include the listing of those roads, and we'll move forward, depending on, depending on how the vote goes.
Fun to add, Mayor, that I, I think we've improved the process of capital review here. We're gonna be working with Mr. Galton to continue to improve that process. My hope from road reconstruction is that we're, we're here in August, September, telling everyone, hey, this is what we're thinking is on the docket for 2015. You don't wanna move it too much because someone sees their, their road on 2015. You don't wanna move it to 2016 or 17. But we're just gonna continue to try to improve the process. I think this is a great first step to get out early so we can get these out to bid and, and be working on this in, in Sept, July and August and not September and October.
Pat?
So my final comment. No, I completely agree. We gotta, have to get this work done. My only concern or my only question was, you know, we group things like Pine Tree, Derwood, Fletcher together because they're in the same neighborhood, and we moved Wilson forward because it was in the same, off the same street as Vinton. My only question was, and thinking about what Nancy was talking about with Belmont, would it be good to combine it with the, the library? I think it needs to get done. The only question is when and how do we maximize taxpayer dollars on this?
I, I think the other grouping, and I could be wrong with the Pine Tree and all, is what, those were also water main roads. And so basically, they're being grouped because they had the water mains done at the same time. We said we'd come back a year later and do the roads, and now we are here four, five plus years later on all those roads. So there is, there's kinda rhyme and reason, and we, as we've talked about going forward, water mains, there's gotta be, if it's to the point of the ordinance adopts water main work and the road reconstruction at the same time, which I would recommend to future, current council and future councils, that's what we have to do so we don't have this coming back to us of, you know, some of it. some of these ditches that have settled are pretty bad.
One quick other comment, Jim. Is it possible, next to the roads that are eligible for state funding, just put maybe the initials SF or whatever, just so it reminds us why some of them are scheduled when they are?
Good suggestion, and then...
I wasn't aware Prospect could be eligible.
And then we could, to help with the planning processes, you know, you never know when you have an underfunded state road program, what'll come in here, but how much potential money could come back from the state for each of those projects might be helpful to have. Okay, thank you. Next item, this should be fairly quick. This is the second annual, I would call it, Second Annual Committee Leadership Meeting, because it would not be limited to chairs only. In fact, I would recommend that the attendees include chairs, vice chairs, and anyone willing to be a chair, attend this meeting. What we covered last year, and I think it had some great feedback from the, those that attended, some of the things we talked about already, which is the legalese behind being on a government committee. What do you, what, Open Public Meetings Act, what are the things you need to do? When can you go an executive? What items can you cover, what things you cannot cover? The other thing we covered was also just how to run a good meeting. So providing some tips, because sometimes people become chairs because they have a passion for what that committee does and maybe not necessarily have the tools right away on how to run a meeting. So we provided that for them. And the last part was just a, since we have leadership of the borough in one room is giving the committees a chance to get together and talk about the goals they have set for the year and share that with the other committees. And possibly create some synergy or alignment between these goals. So the date I'm looking at right now, and this is, would not be an advertised meeting unless we, well, all the, most of council wants to be there, because it's kind of optional. We had a few council members last year just to observe. Would be March 1st. I'm waiting to hear back from Matt to see if he's available. And if he is, we will go ahead and invite the leadership. And I think, once we firm up the date, I think I may send a message to our area mayors, just ask them if they want to come and take a look at what we're doing. I think it's a good program. Any questions or thoughts? Or, I've chotted down some of the other things we'll add into the agenda. All right, 2014 Municipal Operating Budget.
Robert Califf is out this evening, so I'm by solo on this one as well. And I'm sure all the elected officials will help me here. If everyone that's in the audience picks up a copy of the Municipal Operating Budget, instead of doing a PowerPoint, we're gonna just be referencing this document here. And at any point in time, jump in. There's kind of a little discussion topic, discussion points that I'm gonna be going over. The first that I'd like to mention is the budget as a municipal budget is a little bit different than your home budget. In your home budget, if you get more revenue, you get a raise, more money comes in, you can spend more money. In the municipal world, you can't do that. The bottom section of the budget here shows where all the money's going, whether it's going to department operating, rock salt, salaries and wages, waste removal and the like. If for some reason we have a need to expand a particular area, let's say, construction, because construction is just booming, we need to budget for that and make sure we have enough money if we need to expand that particular service. Or, rock salt's a great example. Let's say we budget $100,000 for rock salt. One year we may only use 20, another year we use 60, another year we use 95. We need to budget, and we need to budget $100,000. We can't really go out and find other money later on in the year for most of these line items. At the very end of the calendar year, we can move some from certain operating line items, but we can't expand this bottom-line total budget amount. So let's say you're a home, if you got a raise or something like that, you could start spending more money, you could buy a new car, you could do these things. We can't do that here. So while we call it a budget, I really want to drive home the fact that on the appropriation side, on the spending side, it's really a spending plan. So I think that's really, really important. And because of that, it causes us to be very conservative on the expense side. I think that rock salt is a good example, and we're gonna come back to it later on when we talk about it. But we budget $100,000 for rock salt this year, we're gonna use a lot. Last year, we didn't use quite as much. But we need to budget for the worst-case scenario, because we need to be able to buy rock salt. We can't run out of, we can't run out of rock salt in March. So I don't know if there are any questions with that. If not, I'd like to jump straight to a quick discussion on appropriations. This budget contains no changes in service. We've had changes in service in the past, like garbage removal. No additional staff beyond discussed small expansion of staff in Department of Public Works. We do have hiring of police officers, those are replacements. I would say that if you talk to department heads, department heads may tell you that they would like to see more staff. This budget, and I'm gonna say this budget's the administrator's budget. The administrator and CFO put this together. As a team, we put it together. But if you talk to department heads, some of them would say that they'd like to see more staff. This doesn't include any new staff. It does not include any erosion of any of the services. If there's council's decision to want to expand and go back to twice-a-week garbage pickup or do anything like that, that's not included in here, and we can talk about those costs if there's any desire to want to expand into additional appropriations or additional services. Any questions in particular? And I guess I'm gonna say, is there any questions on what I've said? Because I think at the end of this, we'll be able to get into specific questions on appropriations, specific questions on capital and the like.
And then just a reminder also, as we get, next Monday, we'll go into more detail as we get to hear from the departments.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So third quick topic I wanted to discuss was capital.
Jim, can I just ask one quick question?
Yes, sir.
And you don't, don't answer it today, but we can, remember to answer it the next time. And it's regarding the drawdown on prior-year surplus operating. There's an increase from just under $3 million to just under $3.5. And the 2013 number, I believe, was up from 2012 as well?
2.8 to 2.95.
2.895, right?
2.8 to 2.95.
Right, 2.8 to 2.95. That's, 2012 was 2.8.
Yes.
Right, so that was the Catalonello Light budget. So my big concern, my big question, and don't answer it now...
We're gonna answer it, we're gonna answer it in about 10, 15 minutes.
Okay, well, I hope to be home in time for Villanova game. I guess we're gonna be late for that, but that's okay. We're gonna beat Georgetown tonight. The, you know, historically, we ran afoul of the regulator because we were drawing down a lot of surplus to fund operating. And I just want to make sure we're not falling into that.
This is operating, this is generated from operating as opposed to other sources. So that's what you can cover.
We'll go into it, and I think we're, I think we're, I think we're very sustainable in this number, Rob.
Okay.
And we'll, that's, I think, a couple discussion points down. I think we're gonna spend a fair amount of time talking about surplus, because I think that's extremely...
You want, is it today, or should we do it during the thing?
We're gonna talk about it in a few minutes today.
I see.
Yeah, so...
And, okay, all right.
So in regard to capital, you'll see that, obviously, this has, the biggest impact on issues, budget is what we're setting aside, is that we're setting aside more money for capital. As councils discussed, they want to get more capital done. And as we presented, two weeks ago, when we presented the capital budget, we believe that, given the 100-plus million dollars' worth of assets the borough has between water tanks and fire, we have multimillion-dollar pieces of equipment and multimillion-dollar systems that we have out there, that it's important for us to dedicate a certain amount of capital every year. I mean, I just imagine if we had to pave every road in town, what that cost would be. So we need to have a continual maintenance program. We believe 3.5 million is the right number for this year. We believe that it's the right number going forward, but we'll reserve that for a little bit of discussion at the Capital Project Strategic Planning and for future councils. But we've taken great strides to make sure that we can fund $3.5 million in capital in this budget. And if you look at line 22 on the main budget, you'll see that capital improvement fund's going from 1 million to 3.5 million. That's a 2.5% increase this year. We believe this increase in capital is excellent and much needed. Going forward, our goal is to budget capital in a consistent and sustainable way. In years past, as short as two years ago, three years ago, we were not putting any money aside for capital. We just, we can't put ourselves in that position. We need to find a consistent way to fund a sustainable amount. The good news is that, in this budget, over 1.5 million of capital is being funded by sustainable sources. And if you look at, on page one, line three and line seven, you'll see that there are two, what I'm gonna say are unsustainable items that are funding capital. We have 3.5 million in capital. It's being funded by primarily three lines on our budget here. It's being funded by line three, which is general capital fund balance, which is going towards capital of 1.46. It's being funded by line seven, which is the sale of property. That's the Bello Avenue property. And it's being funded by electric surplus that's being deposited into capital. The electric surplus going into capital, we believe, is sustainable, given our electric surplus contracts. We'll be talking more about that this weekend. But next year, if we want to fund 3.5 million in capital, we will need to find funding for close to $2 million. So that is something we need to really keep in mind. Any questions with regard to just what I said there about capital?
Well, I guess my question is, we're saying we think it's sustainable, but where is the plan that shows how that happens?
I think that, Pat, I said was, the 1.5 million, we believe, is sustainable. We'll talk about that on Saturday in terms of the electric utility surplus. The additional 2 million, I think we'll have to have some more conversations about that, where that funding is gonna come from. And I think some of that could likely come from additional electric surplus that we could anticipate in 2015, when we get a full year of the new contracts. I do think that, once the strategic planning has gone through a capital review and also a budgetary review, we have some other possible ways to fund through determining or pegging how much electric surplus and how much municipal surplus is, quote, "enough." And then, once we start generating beyond that, that can be a source of capital. It may not be sustainable, but it can be a source of funding capital.
I have also the same question about the prior-year surplus being applied to the operating budget. I mean, we increased it fairly significantly this year. It's getting to be a pretty big number. How, not so much are we gonna be able to sustain it, but right now, that's a pretty big growth number. It's almost up 17%. We can't sustain that, that's for certain, I would think.
We can't sustain that growth, but we, I believe we can sustain the number of 3.5 million.
Okay.
So, and that's...
Because, well, just tying into that, when I looked at the operating budget, it's up, and I'm talking about just lines 11 through 20, it's up by almost $700,000 this year.
Yes.
Ben?
Yeah, two points. One on, I think I have two points. One of them on the surplus. Knowing that strategic planning committees are addressing a number of the questions that have come up and looking at, what do we do in this year in the interim? I went back and looked at what we used to do and what we did when we invested in capital on a regular basis and prior to the electric contract that kind of threw us askew. So I went back to 1997, and I went through to 2007. That's right up and, right before we got into the fixed-price multi-year electric contract. And at that time, municipal surplus as a percentage of total budget, this is an average over the period, represented 37%. In '13, and in, I'm sorry, in the '14 budget, it's closer to 25%. So my short comment is that, at least historically, we're well within the bounds of reasonableness. And I don't know what else to look at this year.
Yep. Sounds good. Okay, Jim?
We'll just talk for a few minutes about taxes. Property taxes, in order to fund the operating budget, we're suggesting a 1.25% increase in property taxes. There may be some opportunities there. We have to still refine a few numbers in here, but we're, we want to continue towards a positive trend of having that be a lower number. It was 1.48% last year. Reserve for tax appeals is another big number that's jumping and causing our appropriation side to increase. And for those of you who are keeping, keeping an eye out there, I don't know if Lisa's got her budget in front of her, but it's line 28. Line 28 is reserve for tax appeals. What is that? Reserve for tax appeals is, during the year, we settle tax appeals. People come and say, "Hey, I pay $10,000, I think I should pay, I think I should pay less." And we're like, "You know what? You make a compelling case, we'll settle with you. You should pay $9,000 a year in taxes. We owe you $1,000." We have, that's a very small example. We have some very large potential examples out there, as we have the Gerald A. Farms and other large commercial properties in town that traditionally file tax appeals. It is a much more likely to receive tax appeals right after a revow. And we do have outstanding tax appeal for 2013 with our largest single tax, property taxpayer, that's Gerald A. Five, which is the old Pfizer property, which pays, I believe, about $1.2 million in property taxes. So if we are unsuccessful in convincing them that our assessed value is correct, there's going to be a need for us to potentially pay back some of what they have in property taxes if they're successful on their appeal. This happens every year, but this particular year, we know that it's, we anticipate it's going to be worse. And I believe our most, I believe everyone in council was in executive session when our tax attorney came in and discussed setting aside a significant reserve. We have $230,000 reserved right now. And putting 400 in will give us over $600,000, which we believe will be enough money. However, we're gonna have another meeting, actually, early next week to review a second time. We have hired an appraiser to help us with the Pfizer tax appeal, because obviously, one change at Gerald A. Farms would trigger other changes from the other corporations.
Jim?
Yes, sir.
I'll just say to you what I already sent you an email. But for that particular number, and actually for the report that we get in general, I did sit in the meeting in November, unfortunately, I had to remain mute. But my suggestion is that we really should get from them a schedule that shows really what they think is at risk in terms of what we might have to pay, what the likelihood that is, and when we might be paying it. Because I'm not, I seem to remember them saying that these tax appeals could stretch out over a number of years. I don't know if we necessarily need to fund that line completely this year. So I would just ask them to take another look at that.
We're actually gonna work on that schedule next week, Pat. And it really depends if we are success, if we get a good enough settlement offer, we may want to accelerate the process. I'm looking at Bob Landigan, because this is what he does for his livelihood. And if, so I think it's important to have it. But to your, to your point, this is not a line item that we're gonna be funding at this level for a number of years. So the good news in the future is that potentially $200,000 next year, the year after, will be found money or less appropriation that we need to appropriate for this particular line item. So that'll, that'll be a net positive for the 2015 budget.
My general rule is, I like to make these sort of one-time events semi-recurring, if I possibly can, and just stretch them over years. Actually, what they could do is ask them if there's any they want to try to settle in the next couple of months before we finalize the budget, because we can still massage that number one way or the other.
Ben?
Yeah, I'm sure they'll all settle in the next couple of months if we give them the number they're looking for. The, I just have another historical tidbit, and this is only because the reserve for uncollected taxes is an issue that I raised, to some extent, last year, and a lot, a lot longer and a lot stronger this year. And then again, I decided to go backwards and say, "Okay, what did we do in the past?" And if I go from 2003 to 2013, the reserve for uncollected taxes as a percentage of the overall budget was 0.054. Nope, I'm sorry, 0.056.
I was gonna, I was gonna correct you on that one.
No, I was waiting, I knew someone, it was 0.056. If you look at it in this year's budget, it's 0.054. So we're talking about two one-hundredths difference. And the other thing to keep in mind, and I don't have those numbers, but if there is a failure on the part of tax payments, we have to still pay the county and the Board of Ed's liability on that, even though we don't get any money from them. So I'm, I went from thinking, that's an awfully big number for something that doesn't seem like a lot of liability, to thinking it's probably a prudent number at the very least.
That's helpful, thank you. Any comments on this? All right, Jim, go ahead.
A segue to reserve for uncollected tax, which Ben was just talking about. You can find that on line 30 of your budget, if you're looking. What is it? You know, I think it's best to explain it with an example. So I'm gonna use an example. Let's say the town needs to raise $55 million in property tax... Let's say the town needs to raise $55 million in property taxes. That's Board of Ed, County and Municipal together. It's a rough number. Let's use the number $55 million. Do we issue, do we just issue $55 million in bills? No, because not everybody pays their taxes, they're delinquent taxes. So we need to put a reserve in and build a reserve. And that's what this $1.6 million number is on line 30. It's the reserve for uncollected tax. So if we need to collect 55 million, we will send out 56.6 million in tax bills. We'll add that reserve for uncollected tax. And every year, the tax collection rate, how much we collect varies. So let's say we send out every year bills for 56.6 million. One year, we may get 56.2 million in, another year, we may get 55.8 million, another year, we might get 55.3 million. We need to at least get 55 million. That's, that's our goal and that's, um, that's what we have. So, uh, we need to be conscious of prior year's tax collections and what, uh, could be catastrophic tax collections if there's a real economic issue. And so the reserve for uncollected tax does that. Now, we don't spend it, it's not a spending line item. We just, uh, use it to cover in case we don't collect 100% taxes, which we're not going to. Any additional reserve for uncollected tax always falls directly to surplus. So let's use the, uh, example that I used, and maybe I'm talking so fast or talking with numbers, but if we needed to collect 55 million, we billed for 56.6 and we collected 55.8. So we need to collect 55, we got 55.8, that, um, $800,000, that difference falls immediately into surplus. And, um, that's one of the drivers that we're gonna talk about in a few minutes about the sustainability of surplus. And so it's important to know that it's not a spending line item. It's not anything that, you know, w- we can spend or use other than to collect, other than to cover us on the tax collection. It's a cushion and it's important to have a cushion. And as Ben said, $1.6 million on a $55 million bill is not a huge cushion, but we think it's enough.
And, and that is the, I think, is, people share this with their friends and all that on, over dinner on Saturday. Um, I think what often happens is people t- look at 1.6 million and say, boy, of $13 million of property taxes, that's over 10%. Why, that's, as Jim just pointed out, it's, can't be compared to that and it's gotta be compared to the total number, which is 55 million plus of county and, uh, school taxes. Pat?
So on the schedule you gave us that shows results of municipal surplus, there's two lines really that address this. Lines eight and nine. One is the excess of tax collected, generated from RUT, which I guess shows the amount of money every year that we keep of that 1.5 million because the taxes came in. And then above it, there's delinquent tax collections, which is prior year money that we didn't collect that we finally got. How much in the end do we typically write off? Or is, because there does seem to be a gap between these numbers and, and 1.5. You'd think over time it would average out to that. So I'm assuming that somewhere in here is where we previously, um, recognized, uh, tax appeals that we lost?
That's exactly it.
Okay. So, so if.
That's, that's good. That's exactly it. So if you took 2008, uh, excess collected from reserve for uncollected tax, that's page two line nine, and then you added 2009 delinquent tax collections. You didn't collect it in 2008, we should've collected it in 2009. If you add those two numbers together, it's gonna be very close to the reserve for uncollected tax that we set in 2008. And I can tell you, the reserve that we set was about 1.4 plus million. And, and if you add those two numbers together, that's exactly what you get. The very little difference or shrinkage is, um, is due to appeals. So there are some years, um, 2011, um, by example, and if everyone's looking, it's page two, uh, line nine. Um, the excess generated from the reserve for uncollected tax was very low that year. Other years, it's, uh, been, uh, 1.3 million, 1.2 million that year. The economy was tough. People didn't pay their taxes on time. It was only, um, about $600,000, but you can see the following year in delinquent tax collections, which is line eight for 2012, $615,000 bumped up significantly. That, you're exactly right, over a two-year period, those two lines should come close to equaling reserve for uncollected tax, taking into account the tax appeals and taxes that may be more than a year out, delinquent. Right?
More offline about it.
I'm just looking at it.
Okay. Um, municipal sources, um, that's line two on, um, on the budget. Um, on page one, what is it? It's license, construction fees, zoning permit fees, dumpster pod fees, court fines, interest on bank balances, cell tower leases, sewer connections, shared service contracts, pilots, recreation fees. Um, it, uh, there's a lot of fluctuation amongst those lines, especially on situations like construction code fees. Um, however, they do have a tendency to somewhat balance each other out. And we have a slight drop this year in municipal sources, and that's being driven by, um, interest rates and bank balances. We had a very favorable, um, bank deposit rate, uh, of interest for, on our bank deposits that just recently expired. So we're anticipating about a $50,000 drop in, um, the interest that we're gonna earn on our bank balances, even though our bank balances are a little higher. So, um, other than that, we're anticipating a very stable dollar amount in municipal sources.
And the assumptions, uh, that line item for the completion, successful completion of the GVR project, is that it, there's nothing factored in there?
Uh, good question. We don't anticipate any additional revenues from there until 2015. Um, the only thing at, you know, if for some, well, it's, I just can't see it happening, construction. I can't see them being, accelerating the process and us designating and them getting through the planning board and actually starting construction.
So any surprise would be a good one.
But, yeah, any, any surprise we get will be a good one. I anticipate 2016 will be a banner year for construction fees. Yep. So, um, it's important for us to, to be consistent on municipal sources. What we're really doing is doing anticipated municipal sources. And when we talk about, um, uh, municipal surplus, you'll see what happens to excess municipal, um, revenue that's not anticipated. Uh, electric utilities, yes, I'm sorry.
Can I just ask you a question before you, you move on? Um, all right, so there's, um, a $52,000 decrease. Have you taken into consideration what Chad and Burrow is now paying us as, you know, um, for the construction?
You know, it's a, it's a little, uh, you're.
Or, or, I, I, I don't like to ever consider I have, you know, we have money when we don't have it yet.
Yep.
You know, I mean, I'm, I'm just that kind of a person. I don't spend money unless I have it. So, um, I, I just wondered if that consideration was put in here, cause that's something like 80,000, right?
Uh, it, it could, it could be more. Um, I feel like I've, um, lobbing up, you guys are lobbing up softballs, like I pl- planted that question. That's an excellent question. That's another reason why we think, um, surplus, uh, will continue to grow and be better because that revenue is not anticipated in 2014 because we don't know what that revenue is gonna be, number one. Number two, the state frowns on anticipating a revenue that you've never had in the first place.
That, that's good, that's good.
So we'll see that 2015.
We're gonna see, we're gonna see that in next year's surplus, for sure.
Okay, good.
And Jim?
That was excellent.
Jim, and that also goes in line with FEMA. You can only count what we received so far, the other 800,000. We get it, we get it, but what happens if we get the other 800,000 this year?
Um, it's gonna fall straight to surplus and that'll be another benefit, which is why municipal, um, uh, operating surplus of 3.5 is, is I think a, a very fair number. But I think it's sustainable and that I wouldn't call FEMA a sustainable dollar amount. It's a one, it's gonna be a one-shot, but I think the 3.5 is sustainable without those. But I think we'll, we'll see municipal sources or municipal surplus growing because of some of these positive things that we can't anticipate. I'm gonna briefly talk about electric surplus, but we're gonna talk about it much more on Saturday. Um, pages, uh, on the municipal budget, on page one, lines five and six, you see electric utility surplus. We're gonna be using about, last year, we used 3.7 million. Um, we're hoping to generate an additional one and a half million plus, an additional surplus this year due to new contracts. Excuse me. Um, we plan on using 5.6 million this year in electric surplus, both for capital and operating. That's almost 2 million increase. So, um, we're, we're bumping up against what we think will be, uh, the additional benefit that we get from the electric contracts, um, in terms of the amount of additional electric surplus that we're anticipating. But if you look to page three on here, take a look at line two, you'll see the electric utility surplus. It, it really significantly dropped in 2009 to 2.7 million. Um, over the last two years, it steadily climbed 5.3 million. It, it actually increased another million this year alone to 6.3 million. So the, uh, the utilities' performance, um, has been excellent. And as such, um, we feel confident that these numbers are appropriate. And I know I don't have all the details, I'll have all the details on February 1st, so I'm probably not gonna, uh, probably doesn't make a lot of sense to talk, go too deeply into why we anticipated these numbers, but we can talk a lot more about it on, on Saturday, but I can answer your questions now.
I mean, do we know why we generated another billion dollars in surplus this year? Was there that much extra electricity?
Um, it has to do, uh, with, um, a myriad of things, uh, including, if you recall, we actually had to do an appropriation to buy more. And, and to, to buy more, so yeah, it actually was a consumption thing, Pat.
What more? We sold more.
Yeah. Um, one thing that is a potential negative to next year is the Pfizer building. Um, the Pfizer building alone, um, typically procures 1.2 to 1.3 million dollars a year in electricity.
Mm-hmm.
That's a, that's a big hit on a $22 million to 20, $23 million utility. So we don't know how quickly, I mean, obviously, they're gonna maintain it. It's not gonna go dark, no, they're not gonna let it go to 80 degrees and get moldy inside it, but they're not gonna have to spend nearly as much money on electricity, um, while it's dormant. So, so that's, um, on the long-term side.
Despite that, though, we're still forecasting incremental revenue from the new contracts in the neighborhood of 1.5 or 1.6 million? And the budget, as presented, which we'll discuss much more in detail during the weekend, does not call for any cut in electric rates?
Um, no. But municipal operating surplus, I think we need to spend the most amount of time talking, um, talking about this. If you take a look at page two of the handout that I gave you, um, we'll talk a few minutes. What is, um, municipal surplus? It's like, it's like retained earnings, um, it's excess funds that are left over. Um, it's not a great title for it, but I'll explain more about it in a few minutes. But first, let's take a look at the historical use of surplus. If you take a look at line two on the upper chart, you're gonna see a, a line that says less utilized in municipal budget. That's how much municipal surplus we used to operate, to go back into the operating budget. And as Mr. Calanella said, for a while there, we were taking out a whole lot more than we were generating. You can see in 2008, nine and 10, we were taking out over $5 million in surplus. If you look at line four, that's how much we were generating in surplus. And you've heard me, mo- probably heard me say it in the past, it's like a bathtub. The water going in is how much is being generated. The water going out the tub is how much is, is being taken out in surplus. What happens to the level in the bathtub? When more is going out, when more is being utilized in the budget than is going in, the balance is dropped. So you can see, um, on line five of this schedule, balance has dropped from 7.8 to 6 million to 4.4 million. That was the discouraging signal that S and P saw that gave us, put us on negative credit watch. As you can see, since then, 2011, we, uh, leveled off. We spent a little bit more and we used a little bit more in surplus than we generated. And then in 2012, um, we headed back in a very positive direction, um, generating 1.2 million more in surplus than we generated. We generated 4 million in surplus, we only used 2.8. This year, we anticipate generating almost 3.9 million in surplus. So if you were to take a look at line four, the average of all those years, the very lowest we've ever had is 3.416. So using 3.48, um, is, uh, in our mind, a very sustainable number. On top of the fact that the very positive, um, benefit of FEMA, of the Chatham construction contracts and appropriation reserves that we think are gonna be higher than normal. I think all those things are gonna lead to a very good surplus number next year. But from a sustainable standpoint, um, we believe that 3.4 to 3.5 is a sustainable annual surplus dollar amount that we can count on and therefore is appropriate to use this year. Before we get into any questions on that, let's go to the lower section, which, um, talks about what generates surplus. And I think, maybe I'm getting wonky or people are falling asleep on me, but I think this is really where the rubber hits the road in terms of explaining what surplus is. Um, so line seven, non-taxable revenues, what is that? Um, that is any revenues that we, that were greater than anticipated. So for example, if you take a look at that line, line seven, 2011, why did it jump up so much? Normally, it's a million, 600,000, something like that, 1.3 million in 2011. Any takers? The realogy, the realogy, we, we collected $500,000 more than normal in construction, in construction code fees that year. We anticipated this much, we collected a whole lot more. Anytime we collect more in revenues than we anticipate, and we anticipate on line two of page one, municipal sources, what we anticipate, the money doesn't get lost. The money goes, goes into our, our retained earnings, it goes into our account. Um, same with what we talked about a few minutes ago about delinquent tax collections. They fall right to surplus. Excess for the reserve for uncollected tax, line nine, rut, reserve for uncollected tax. That dollar amount falls straight to surplus. So in essence, the reserve for uncollected tax of 1.6 million is a continuing, sustainable generator of surplus. There are towns out there that have a very high reserve for uncollected tax specifically to generate surplus. That's a strategy that they use. I think ours is appropriate. There are other towns like Summit that have a, a huge reserve for uncollected tax. What else generates surplus? Line 10, cancellation of prior year appropriations. What does that mean? That means, remember Rock Salt? We talked about Rock Salt? Hundred, we budgeted for $100,000. Michael and David only used $60,000. There's $40,000 left over and they didn't go out and buy anything else. They, they said, hey, we didn't need $40,000, we didn't spend it. That $40,000, um, it goes eventually into surplus. So that line number 10 is really, uh, a combination of us being conservative on appropriations and our department heads doing an excellent job not spending their line items down. Some, you know, some departments and some towns, they just, it's my budget, I gotta spend it all the way down. If I don't spend it all the way down, they're gonna take it away from me. The council's been very good and we've always taken an approach of, don't spend it down. We understand that certain years, you need more Rock Salt, certain years, you need less Rock Salt. Just use your money wisely and our department heads have done that.
Pat?
So that number does not include capital projects, is that correct?
No.
Okay, so that, let's say, one and a half million dollars is against about $10 million of operating budget. It's, or, the operating budget looks, looks like it's just south of just about 19 million, but of that, almost 10 is salaries and wages. Um, that doesn't really get covered by appropriations, I'm assuming, correct?
Oh, it does.
It does?
What year are you talking about?
Let's take an example of, uh, uh, high-paying staffer retiring. We don't know that the high-paid staffing is gonna retire in January when we set the budget. We have them in at $100,000. They retire in February and we replace them with, or maybe we don't replace them or we wait a few months and then replace them with a $40,000 year employee. That's $60,000, it's gonna go right back.
Includes breakage, then?
So, uh, breakage is in there.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, a change in health insurance. Um, if someone goes from a family coverage to a single or, or a, a husband and wife coverage, all those things. So it's not just the 10 million, it's really everything other than, um, the public library, the joint meeting, the reserve for uncollected tax. It's, it's, it's the subtotals of.
It's 11 through 20?
Uh, it's 11 through 20, uh, it's 11 through 20, yes.
Okay.
And 25, if we, if we're a little on, o- o- overestimate debt service.
Ben and then Carmella?
Yeah, just to keep my, uh, my wonkiness going here. I did the same thing, again, historically. Uh, it's very interesting, actually, if you go look at the history of the town and numbers, because if you go back, and I'm sure it can, well, I shouldn't say I'm sure, but I imagine it continues in the same spirit if you go further back. But if you go back to 97, what you see is that most of these numbers, surplus categories, et cetera, are higher than they, than they are in this projected budget. They went through a long swoon and that was dramatic to the point where obviously we got put on negative watch. We're now coming out of it and we're getting closer to what it looked like pre-2007, but we're still got a little bit to go. Now, I don't know that what we did 97 to 2007 was the right thing, but as I said earlier, I don't know what else to look at right now. Um, just as in, and aside here, when you look at the average municipal surplus balance, over that period, it was, uh, 7.765 million. So, uh.
That's against how many dollars in budget?
Much smaller budgets. We're talking about budgets in, in the mid-teens.
So that's a 50%. How does the borrowing?
It's not up 50%, it's down.
No, no, that's 50% of the. That's 50% of the budget.
Budget, yeah.
How does the borrowing that we did in those years...
I'm sorry?
Maybe we can discuss it offline, but how does the borrowing that we did in those years affect the data?
It's a good question. I don't know. I'd have to go back and look.
I don't know what you mean, Rob, but we can talk offline about that. I can get a better understanding. So, and I chose not to do a PowerPoint, but maybe I should have. If you look at the bottom-line number here, it shows what generated the surplus every year, and that line equals this line here, what was generated in surplus. So, again, you can see every year, sometimes, non-taxable revenues were a big source of surplus. Sometimes, delinquent taxes were a big source of surplus. Sometimes, it's the reserve for uncollected tax. Sometimes, it's the cancellation of appropriations. They all fluctuate, but when you add them together, they tend to average or average out. And so, you're seeing a low of 3.4 and a high of $4 million. In the last two years, we've had $4 million and 3.9 million generated in surplus. So, I believe the use of 3.48 million in surplus is a sustainable dollar amount, especially as the reserve for uncollected tax grows over the years. So, Rob, I hope I answered some of your questions.
And the other key thing, again, is it's smaller than the amount that was generated in the prior year. So, at 3.4, we're, that's coming off of the 3.9 generated in 2013, as opposed to if you looked at 2009, which was 5.2 used, but only 3.9 generated. And so, it's, so it's, doesn't affect our, what standard quarters might look at. Carmella, then, Bob?
Yeah. I have a question. I keep on looking at the Madison-Chatham joint meeting, and this 4% increase seems very big to me. I mean, I haven't seen that increase in a long time down there. And so, I really believe that that's going to change. I don't know if anybody has, you know, I know that we're, we'll probably, we have a meeting on Thursday to look at the budget, but I'm not so sure that the, you know, the budget committee has met yet to kind of go over that. And I'd like to make the suggestion to the mayor, because it was totally awesome last year. What he did is, you know, he came in and really looked at it, and that number decreased substantially. I mean, I think we were almost flat last year. So, I, you know, I really, I'm concerned. I mean, 4% doesn't sound like a lot.
What we'll have to look at, and there's two things that we'll drive at. One is the actual budget for 2014, the joint meeting. The other is, just like we have here, is the previous year's surplus, because that will come off the top, and then there's, the allocation goes out after that. So, that's a possibly still-moving target. I don't know where we are.
We also, I mean, you know, we're going through this business of trying to establish a different standard for allocating the costs.
Right, right.
And we're using, we're advocating for using actual metering. If we prevail this year, the swing in that number is $80,000 to our favor.
Right. Yeah. So, this is still, this is still at the 66, not at the 61 that we assume is the correct...
So, you know, it's come to the meeting. I mean, we really need to get them to change.
You know I never miss them.
We really need to get them to change.
I don't know why, but I never miss them.
And that's $80,000 that, obviously, we'd have to be able to give back to our taxpayers. Or electric utility.
That's important.
That's an important number.
We could see $80,000 savings right there, and the property tax increase that's proposed here could, would almost go in half.
Right.
It would be almost, you know, instead of 1.25%, it would be 0.6% because of...
Makes a big difference, yeah.
Working on the joint meeting budget and then getting Chatham to agree to the new allocation. And we've been working with Chatham Administrator for a long time, but it's important now to have advocacy from elected official to elected official to make them recognize that the new allocation should be, should be embraced and embraced now.
Ben?
We've had some very interesting conversations as this budget has been formulated, and we're not done. There's, I personally feel that if we keep to 1.25, we're doing well, and if we have additional funds, we can look at the electric utility. I mean, I'm not, I don't, you know, I know there are arguments in favor of reducing one versus the other, and they make a difference on your income level and taxes you pay, et cetera. I'm ambivalent to that, but I am very sensitive to the fact that there are people who live here who are having a lot of trouble staying, and if nothing else, we ought to, we ought to do something for them, and I'd like to see us have a pot of money that we can start to, you know, to reduce the cost of living here.
Pat?
You're here.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with that. I think one of the things we have to look at is, and this is something I think Ben, Rob, and Jim and I discussed, which is, in the age of a 2% cap, does it really pay to try to drive the property tax down at the expense of an electric rate cut? We have the ability to do whatever we want to with the electric rate if we need to. Right now, we're locked in for several years, but when that expires, I don't want to have to go back to the same problem we had five or six years ago when the electric rates went up and we couldn't raise taxes fast enough. And that was before there was a 2% cap. With a 2% cap, if we have to, if we have to go to the state and say, yeah, well, our electric utility rates are gonna go up tremendously, and we wanted to try to cushion it, we, you know, we're not gonna get as much money coming in, we're gonna have a hard time trying to get them to give us anything more than 2%. So, we have to be a little careful with that. And it's one of the things I've had to look at for the last decade, and you, as much as it's nice to say this should be 0%, I think we do need to look at the 2 and how we are able to adjust the rates on each.
Yep. It is a, and we'll see more of that on Saturday, but it is a balancing act of how that all... Ben?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, when we go back and forth on these discussions, that, of course, is one of the factors that comes to play. But the other one you should consider is, if you went to 2% from 1.25, you, off the top of my head, would have about another $70,000 that you could now apply to electric rates, because you've collected that much more in property tax. But in electric rates, in terms of percentages, you're talking about a third of a percent. So, it's, it's not what I would call an exciting reduction, but it's a start.
It's X amount of dollars either way.
It's X amount of dollars either way. I agree. I'm just saying that, to the extent we want to do something meaningful, it's a start, but it's not especially meaningful. I just wanted to point that out.
No, I understand. I'm just saying, though, we shouldn't be moving money from the electric utility over to artificially lower the tax rate, because down the road, it could hurt future counties if we have issues.
That's not the way we got to the number. I don't think it was artificial moving. No. It was a backed-in number, and I actually, my own personal target initially was much more aggressive in both contexts, both electric rates and the overall property tax rate increase. But it is what it is. I mean, you can't make the numbers change for you. We're still looking into some of these things, and that's why I was very encouraging about the joint meeting, because that's $80,000 just sitting there, waiting to be plucked, as it were, and it's, and it's a fair situation for us. We're not, you know, we're not asking for something that's unrealistic. We're asking for our due.
Yep.
Worth $80,000.
And as we mentioned at the start, that this is the first introduction of the concept is budget prepared by the staff, and we know, we've already talked about some of these moving targets and, you know, philosophies and things, so things will, we'll see where we are in a few weeks.
Mayor, I would just add one thing. What Pat said is what S&amp;P wants to hear, which is, I don't want to say tax to the max, but it's, don't miss out on an opportunity to generate revenue. So, that, you know, is a very viable option, is to go to the max on property taxes, but then look for other ways, either expand services or look to change the electric rate. That's purely a council decision, obviously, but it's one that, that gives a little more flexibility down the road and is one that S&amp;P, I think, kind of is gonna tend to like.
I mean, I want to be clear. I think we set the service rate, and then we decide how we're gonna fund it. To be honest with you, I've always viewed the electric utility as sort of a, an alternate way of taxing, because a percentage of the money comes back to us as surplus. So, we set that rate. We decide how much ultimately we're gonna both need to run the utility, but also how much is gonna come to the borough, really, in lieu of taxes.
You know, I'm thinking, you know, about your historic viewpoint, because part of that historic viewpoint, I was here, unfortunately. But anyway, I, you know, I'm kind of looking back, and I'm looking at the surplus that was generated way back, and, you know, that first line, the balance at the beginning of the year, 2008, 2009, and whatever, and what we utilize in the municipal budget. And in some of those years, if you go back, even though we utilize, you know, like 5,200 or whatever that was, you know, the increase in taxes were pretty high at that time, you know? But in the same token, when you look, if you go down, you go down and you look at the difference between what we utilized and what we generated, in some of those years, like 2009, we didn't do hardly any capital budget. And that's what we were using the money for. We were using that surplus to do capital projects, as we are this year, to the tune of $1.6 million. But if you go back, in 2009, we didn't have those capital budgets. I mean, you know, you guys all are big financial, I look at it in a simplistic way. What did we do with that money? You know? And what we didn't do with that money? Okay? At this point. And if you look at 2009, okay? Guess what? Those are the streets that never got done, four or five years ago. Okay? So, I mean, that's how I just kind of look at, at all of, at all of this and the surplus. I think that we should be extremely grateful for the utility. Do we want to work on it strategically? Absolutely. You know? But I also think that if you were to go out and do a survey and say to people, hey, listen, do you want lower taxes or you want to lower electric rate? I think you'd be very surprised at the, you know, at the answer, because I've been trying to ask that question, you know, of people, and I'm very surprised. You know, a lot of people are saying, no, leave my... I'm having a hard time with that concept, and we'll talk about it.
Well, no, I'm not saying that automatically. I'm saying, I'm saying, play out both scenarios so you understand. And it's, you have to look at it over a five- or six-year period, because you have to go, you really, we almost should go back through what happened from, let's say, 2007 through last year.
Right.
Because you have to think about, what happens if we have to replay that scenario again, where the electric rates, you know, they're coming down now, but suddenly, they shoot back up?
Right.
Back then, you were right. We were able to raise taxes significantly. With a 2% cap, you won't be able to.
Right.
You'll have to throw all of it onto the electric utility, and there's a limit on how much we can raise electric before we start to chase away Drew. So, you know, we have to kind of look at the whole thing.
Either side of that is what happened during that period, which is, there was a reduction in services. There was a reduction in staffing. I mean, you know, you have two parts to the budget. You have the top part with revenue. You have the bottom part with appropriations. And you look at it, I mean, you can, you know, you end up with a smaller staff. You end up with streets that aren't fixed. You end up with the problems we're now addressing.
Well, to throw another pitch out about our...
Once a week, garbage pickup.
Strategic planning, in the initial conversation, I said, we could come out with some mission statements around the electric utility.
For work.
You know, I think number one, and consistent no matter what it is, is provide reliable power for the residents and businesses of Madison. Number two is provide support for, you know, so that, the number two is a tough thing, is, you know, is it to provide subsidized electricity? I don't think so. But is it to provide a, you know, another source of revenue for the borough that benefits all the residents? Probably, but we'll sort through all that as time goes on. I think the, Jim, are you covered? I think one of the things that we certainly have as a great takeaway from this is a conversation that most towns can't have. Not, I'm not just talking about the electric utility, but overall, as far as a very strong budget, a very strong capital reinvestment at a, what sits right now, at 1.2, 1.1 and 1/4% increase in property taxes. And that number could change as we go through and we fine-tune some of these things. So, it's a lot of great work. We got some more work to do, but we have an incredible starting point, which most towns would not have. So, any other comments or... So, we've tracked all our moving targets. We'll be back here. We've got more to do council meeting-wise, but as far as budget, we'll be back here on Saturday morning, which we'll hear more on the utilities, and we'll have a little bit of, as I said, the town hall format. Thank you, Jim, for the pincheting for all involved. And...
Boy. I'm gonna do an email.
There are no ordinances for hearing, so now we're on to invitation for discussion. Number two, where you may comment on anything you would like. Again, state your name, your address, write the same on the sheet, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Is anyone, is there anyone wishing to be heard? Done?
Is there a need for a deputy borough clerk? I know we had a deputy borough clerk a couple of years ago, passed away. Is this something that would be decided in this year's budget?
We do.
We have a deputy borough clerk. We have a borough clerk, a deputy borough clerk, and we're looking at a part-time person in that, not, we're not looking to replace Patricia Graham. I don't think she's replaceable.
Yep. So, we, there is a deputy borough clerk in position, so it's, we did have two full, two full-time, or we had three full-time, and now we're at two, but we have backfilled with some part-time positions. And Liz's hard work, we have one and a half sitting right next to me, so that's...
So, we're still looking for a deputy borough clerk?
No, no. It's a filled position right now. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. Introduction of ordinances.
Okay. Ordinance is scheduled for first reading. Have a hearing date set for February 10th, 2014. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading, ask the borough clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 1, 2014. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, replacing ordinance 2, 2009, pertaining to part-time, non-union salaries and offices.
I move ordinance 1-2014.
I second that. Council discussion. Roll call of vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance 3, 2014.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, appropriating $1,660,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the 2014 Road Reconstruction Program.
Mayor, I move ordinance 2-2014.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on this ordinance? Roll call of vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance 3, 2014.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending Chapter 147 of the Borough Code entitled Public Records and Documents Fees For, Amending Fees for Construction and Non-Construction Bid Documents.
Mayor, I move ordinance 3-2014.
I'll second.
Council discussion. Roll call of vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?[1784.32]
Yes.
Mr. Walkowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move consent agenda resolution 47 dash 2014 through R 62 dash 2014.
A second.
Discussion. Roll call of vote?
Mr. Cattellella?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
There is no unfinished business? Approval of vouchers?
Public safety, $21,984.56. Health and public assistance, $904.40. Public works and engineering, $103,565.49. Finance and borough clerk, $20,563.31. Utilities, $1,205,45.3. Total is $1,347,558.83.
Motion, motion for the vouchers?
Mayor, I move the approval of the vouchers.
Have a second?
Second.
Discussion. It was nice and low until your million came in there for utilities. I'm sorry. Roll call of vote, please?
Mr. Cattellella?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
There is no new business?